It's four thirty and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith is absent, but he is on Zoom.
Okay, Mr. Bailey or Commissioner Bailey, would you like to give the invocation?
All your hands, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given to us. We praise and thank you for all things, and we would just ask that you be with us tonight. That we, through our deliberations, for the citizens of Grashit County. Versus the name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Okay, my deletions to the flag? Additions or deletions to the agenda? An approval?
Move the agenda, sport, second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bailey and supported by Commissioner.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gay, Commissioner Gay. Okay, and this evening, it is my honor to pass or to put out a resolution, two thousand twenty-three, dash two ninety-seven, for our prosecuting attorney. And if you'd like to come up, we're going to have Laura Benita and Jennifer Shepherd that's going to.
Should we pass?
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to approve that first.
I move with.
Sorry.
I second it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Owens and seconded by Commissioner Gay that we've approved this resolution this evening for our prosecuting attorney.
A roll call.
Okay, we need a roll call?
resolutions, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith was absent.
Okay. Now we're ready.
Well, Keith, this is a special night, and I know that you're not one to have eyes on you and attention on you when it's of a personal nature, but we're all very thankful to you, very proud of you. And we feel incredibly honored to have had you, have you leading us for the number of years that you have led and served the citizens of this county. So several individuals worked together on this resolution, and I'm going to read it to you. And I just want to impress upon you how meaningful all of the contents of this resolution are and how truly remarkable you are as a prosecutor and as a front. This is a resolution honoring Keith J. Cushion upon retirement from the office of prosecuting attorney. Resolution number two zero two three dash two nine seven. Whereas Keith J. Cushion, prosecuting attorney for Grashit County, announced his retirement as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Keith J. Cushion began his career serving the citizens of Grashit County in nineteen eighty-four as an assistant prosecuting attorney. And whereas Keith J. Cushion moved through the ranks of the prosecutor's office, first being promoted to chief assistant prosecuting attorney, and in nineteen ninety-six, being appointed as the prosecuting attorney for Grashit County. Whereas Keith J. Cushion has subsequently been elected to seven consecutive four-year terms by the citizens of Grashit County. And whereas throughout his career, Keith J. Cushion has consistently worked to uphold and enforce the law, protecting the rights of the accused and those of victims. And whereas Keith J. Cushion has worked to provide fair and just resolutions to criminal matters, to develop and sustain specialized and treatment-based programs and services, and to collaborate with partner agencies in coordinated systems of care. And whereas, as the prosecuting attorney for Grashit County, Keith J. Cushion has served as the contact between prosecutors, law enforcement, and the courts while overseeing the daily operations of the prosecutor's office. And whereas Keith J. Cushion has served as a mentor to the assistant prosecutors who have worked within the prosecutor's office, sharing his knowledge of criminal law and procedure and his experience as a skilled trial attorney. And whereas Keith J. Cushion is an individual of impeccable integrity and has gained the respect of not only his fellow prosecutors and law enforcement officers, but also of the judges and defense bar of Grashit County. And therefore, be it resolved that the Grashit County Board of Commissioners extends its sincere appreciation to Keith J. Cushion for his thirty-eight years of unselfish dedication and outstanding service to the citizens of Grashit County. Be it further resolved that the board wishes him continued success and happiness in all his future endeavors. Thank you.
Judge McDonald said, if you're going to talk, please keep it to less than fifteen minutes. I can assure you that's not a problem. Thank you for the kind words. The. I've worked with a lot of boards of commission, a lot of different county administrators. And I've always been impressed with the fact that every board of commission that I've worked with, every county administrator has always been receptive to the needs of the prosecutor's office. We've always gotten what we've needed to do what we wanted to do and needed to do. And I appreciate that. The board is now constituted. I haven't had much of a chance to work with since I think you took office in January. Some of you have obviously been here longer, but I have been impressed with the fact that you did have the wisdom to appoint Chris Osterhoff to the position of county administrator. I think that was great to work with Chris for a number of years. I think that was an excellent choice, and I think that reflects well on the board. For those of you who don't know, my assistant, Laura Benitez, who will become the prosecutor because she received the appointment from our circuit judges. Laura, would you just give them a wave in case they don't know? I've been the voice of the people in the criminal justice system for thirty-eight years. That's going to go to Laura. And she's going to do a great job. I can tell you that. And she'll be backed up by two of the best assistant prosecutors I've ever worked with. Jennifer Shepherd, my chief assistant prosecutor, and Pauline Davis. They're excellent people and will continue to serve the people of Grashit County. So I thank the people for allowing me to represent them and be their voice. Kind of a surprise when you think, why would they do that? But yet they did. And I'm grateful. And it's, and Grashit County, as I've always said, this is a great place to live and raise your family. I think we have good values here, and that goes to the leadership, of course, that comes from the commissioners who make decisions on behalf of the county too. So I thank you, folks. Thank you very much.
Our audience. Okay, brief comments from the fans.
So I'll take this opportunity to make a brief comment. First of all, on behalf of my fellow judges and all of the courts here in Grashit County, I'd like to thank and congratulate the board for a couple of things. For, first of all, this recognition of Keith. It's very well deserved. He's served Grashit County and its citizens admirably over these thirty-eight years, and we really appreciate your recognizing that. And I also want to congratulate and thank the board for promoting and hiring Chris Osterhoff as our next county administrator. I can tell you unequivocally, on behalf of the judges of Grashit County, our circuit bench, Judge Bacher, on the probate and family court bench, and myself from the district court, and on behalf of all of the court staff, that Chris has our hundred percent support and confidence that he'll do a fine job for Grashit County. He's demonstrated that over the years he's been here. He's been collaborative. He's been proactive. He's been supportive of the needs of the entire county organization, be it law enforcement, or the courts, or other county administrative offices and support positions. And I know he'll continue to do that. So I want to thank you. Good luck.
Sure.
Is there any other comments from the audience? Okay. On consideration of the consent calendar, board minutes, communications, and recommendations from committees.
Move the consent calendar, sport.
A motion by Commissioner Bailey and supported by Commissioner Owens. Okay, administration report, administrators' report.
On this.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
You don't need a roll call for that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any unopposed? Motion passed. Okay, now the administration, administrators' report.
Right. Well, good afternoon, board. I too would like to thank you for your support for putting me in this chair. I just want to say that our contract has been signed between the county and myself, and has been filed with the H.R. I have introduced myself to the staff today. I sent out an email letting them know that it has been official. I do plan on moving into my new office tomorrow. I do plan on keeping Tracy's old phone number, both in the office and mobile, mostly because outside entities are used to using that phone number in order to get a hold of the Grashit County administration. So as far as people inside Grashit County, I will let them know that my phone number will be changed. That will be easy for them to update. But it'll be more difficult for some of the outside agencies that will be looking for a county administrator. So I do plan on changing my phone number for that. We're looking to hold our first department heads meeting in a couple of weeks. I'm going to survey a couple of dates for that, and I have attended an orientation held by Greater Grashit for the county administrator. A quick update on some of the county projects. I had a health department walk-through today with Tony Miller from Community Development. That project is wrapping up. We replaced the HVACs and air conditioners. There was significant work that needed to be done internally and externally. In order to do that, this was funded by AARP funds. It ran approximately four hundred thousand dollars. The work that they did was extremely impressive. They're just waiting on a couple suppression devices in some of the closets where the HVACs are stored, and that will be wrapped up. Staff there are extremely happy with the way that it looks. The infamous chiller that is out by the dumpsters in between the sheriff's office and the courthouse will be replaced within the next two weeks. If you remember, this has been delayed probably eighteen months now due to parts not being available. So we will have an air conditioning unit for the courthouse before summer that will not break down every other week. I imagine the staff are extremely happy about that, especially the clerk's office, because they seem to be the most affected when this goes down. Another project that abruptly began that we were not expecting is the plaster and painting of the Rotunda Circuit Court and Probate Court on the fourth floor. We were contacted by the time Tony was contacted, and that's going to begin tomorrow. So we will have someone from Buildings and Grounds assigned to that while they are in a public area to make sure that there's proper roped-off places. Residents are still able to walk around and still be safe from any falling debris that may be coming down from them replacing the plaster. Real quick update on the lawsuits. The three main lawsuits that Grashit County is involved in all have had significant advancements in the last week and a half. I'm not going to go into extreme detail, but we will most likely go into closed section at the next meeting to talk about those more. One of the items, the opioid lawsuit, I have placed a resolution to be passed on the agenda. That is item number K-two, that we will get to as soon as updates are done here. I need the board's permission to enter us into this lawsuit to be a recipient of those funds for Walmart, CVS, Allergan, and Teva Pharmaceuticals. I've filled out the appropriate paperwork with the lawyers. Just need approval from the board to receive those funds. Consumers Energy lawsuit related to depreciation for the turbines. There's been some movement in that to the point where MREC has called for an in-person meeting this Thursday at two P.M. in Carroll. They have not shared exactly what that movement was, but they wanted to call an in-person meeting. So I will be contacting Kevin Beeson, who is now our area's representative on MREC, to see his plans on going, if you would like me to go, and if, or if we're going to just zoom in for that. So we will have an update on that at our next meeting also. And then the tax sale lawsuit progress has been made in this lawsuit, and I feel that it is best to be discussed in closed section in a couple of weeks. In Saturday news, our Veterans Affairs Director Nancy Bozer is going to be leaving us at the end of this week. This was sort of in motion right at the beginning of the last meeting that we had, but was not publicly official. Nancy has worked with us for a couple of years here. She took the machine that that had been built by the previous Veterans Director and really polished it up. She's been working very hard to help us recruit replacements. That position is currently posted, and we are accepting applications for it, and we have been receiving applications for it. And that will close at the end of this month. And then we will pursue interviews. Commissioner Gay, the soil erosion permit that you requested that Community Development soil erosion follow up on related to the lagoon in your district has been followed up on. They did not have a permit. They now do have a permit, so that is now being monitored by the county. The classification study today, Sheila reached out to Paypoint to find out what the next steps for this will be. We did receive a draft of the classification study for wages for the county employees right as Tracy was transitioning, transitioning out. So once we get a hold of them, we will find out what the next steps are. Would envision that that would be a presentation to the board of what they found. I just wanted to give you a couple of projects that are important to me around the courthouse that we will be working on in the next couple of months over the summer. Policies, any policies that we haven't written or brought to you in the last five years need to be reviewed, and they need to be refreshed. A lot of them are outdated, particularly our travel policy, our purchasing policy. So we will be looking at those throughout the summer and bringing them individually to the board to update. Signage throughout the courthouse is also outdated. There are many signs pointing our residents to different departments that are no longer here. For example, we have a lot of signs that refer to the Drain Commissioner's Office down at the end by I.T. So one of the things that I want to do is replace a lot of those signs so that people are able to navigate our courthouse. Bathrooms, the bathrooms that we have currently, the women's restrooms have changing stations for babies. The men's restrooms do not have changing stations for babies. I would like to update that. And we're also looking to pursue identifying a private room dedicated for nursing women, not only for our employees, but also women that may come in here from the public. What that would allow them to do is have a private room where they could do that. It's my understanding that currently the accepted practice is in a bathroom stall, and I do not consider that an acceptable accepted practice. So we're working to, for instance, that will be more appropriate. And lastly, that I wanted to update you as part of my first administrator's report is an update on the airport negotiations with the city of Elma. Approximately two weeks ago, Commissioner Smith allowed me to go ahead and negotiate with the city manager of Elma, Eric Ripley, to see if we could negotiate, work towards a deal that would fit for both Grashit County and Elma. And we have made significant progress in that. We have come to terms that we believe both Grashit and Elma would accept. This week I will be drafting a resolution. I will be sending this resolution to Eric. Eric will review it, make any changes that he feels will be necessary. Once we finalize that, it is our intent to informally bring it to our boards individually and get an informal thumbs up or thumbs down from the boards. And then once we both get thumbs up from the boards, that's when we would like to come public with it and bring it to a meeting and have a resolution passed by each individual board. Once each individual board would approve that, that is when we would send those terms to the lawyer that is representing the current authority and have that lawyer write up the agreement. And then that is where the transition period would start. It is my expectation that this will not take much longer. But I'm very excited that I feel like that we have made progress with that. And with that, that concludes my administrators' report.
Is there any questions for our administrator? You mentioned that you were going to bring it to each board. Are you talking about Commissioner? Individually, or what do you mean by board?
What I would do is I would bring it up in my weekly meeting with the board chairman to see if this is, if that resolution would be something that he feels that the board would support.
Okay, I'd like to see all of us be included on it. I'd like to see how everybody else feels.
And we will, we will definitely get to that step, absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you for your reports. Okay, Commissioner Bailey, do you have a report?
Yeah. Went to Hamilton Township. They were busy doing their last budget adjustments and getting things taken care of that. And while we were at that meeting, they were successful in selling their dump for quite a bit.
They were selling their what?
Their dump. They had a dump site.
Oh, okay.
Hasn't been used for years, and they went through the proper channels with Eagle and got permission to sell that area.
That's great.
Sold that, so that was all good, yeah. And then I went to North Star, and basically the same thing. They were working on the budget, doing their budget adjustments, and glad to report that Hamilton and North Star Township are doing okay. And then I went, the next evening, I went over to Lafayette Township, and they were doing their budgets. It's that time of year. And then that was the first meeting that I attended that Brady Nieske, who is now their supervisor, took over from Justin Stoneman. Justin had moved, actually built a home and moved into Wheeler Township. We could no longer hold that position. So, and they're, they're doing very well also. And then went to Wheeler. And they reviewed their budget. Everything is set there. They're all good. And then they brought, Aggie brought a fire report from their last fire board meeting. And by the way, Tom brought a fire report from that Ashley Fire. So I'm kind of getting around and looking into all the fire departments. It's kind of fun. But no, everything is, everything is solid. People are doing a good job. I think the biggest thing that all the clerks were worried about is what's going to happen in this election, and there's so much uncertainty that it's really bothering people, because we do have elections coming down the road here, and somebody's going to make a decision at the state level, obviously.
Right.
So, but that's, that's one of the big things that, that the clerks are concerned about. And then tomorrow, him and I got to go for the health meeting. That's it.
I have a question about the election. Does it start until next year, or does it start this year?
It will start with the city of Ithaca and city of St. Louis for their November election.
This year?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. Okay, Commissioner Gay.
I went to the Sumner Township meeting, and I learned that they don't have any wind turbines. They're close to the airport. Awesome. And they can't do it. They talked a lot about money to go to the roads, certain roads, I guess, really close to Sumner. Keeping the roads up. And they talked a lot about buying their, a fire truck. Not just for Sumner Township, but other townships as well. And that's what I got.
So, okay. Otherwise, everything's going great in your area.
I hope so. I only have one phone call, and I took care of the guy complaining that dumping manure twenty-four seven in the lagoon. So.
Okay, Commissioner Owens.
Well, I went to Sumner with Tim. I think those guys talked to us as much as they talked amongst themselves in the meeting. Got a kick out of them. And yesterday I went with Northern Michigan Counties Association, and we went on a tour of the Wexford jail in Cadillac. Some darn guy sits in the chair out here. He's always talking about a new jail, so I, I went up there to check it out.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, and myself, I went to the airport meeting, which took place right after our last county commission meeting, and I've also been to Bethany Township meeting, and not too much going on there either. They're in the middle of doing their
Budget.
Their budget and stuff like that. Seems like there's something else I was going to tell you. God, I can't remember. I should have wrote it down. But otherwise, everything seems to be fine in the community. The only one I cannot get to, it seems like, is the city of St. Louis, and they're exactly, they start about, I think it's six o'clock. So by the time I get there, it's pretty well done.
Yeah, the same problem with Ithaca.
Yes. That's me. Okay, let's move on then. Consider, okay, then we're going to consider a new business, Animal Control, Tom Clark. Nice to see you, Tom.
Nice to see you guys. Glad to meet you, Tim and Dave. Tom Clark, been Animal Control Director for Buck the last eighteen years, and I've been at the department for twenty-six. So I, congratulations on being elected, and I also echo the same sentiments everybody else has had about Chris. He's a phenomenal, phenomenal person. He's going to lead this county and do very, very well by us. So I've worked with him for the last five or six years, and he's been a great guy. Knows his numbers in and out, and he will do a great job for us, do a great job. But I've got some great news anyways today. Mike and myself had, we've been to a couple of different meetings with Animal Control, with Emergency Management. One of the things at the, at the meetings, I went to one in October, it was a large Um, one of the things at the at the meetings, I went to one in October, it was a large uh livestock handling um event down in MSU. And uh, by the state and uh, they had brought in what they call an E-Rail trailer, which is a emergency response to accidents involving livestock. They've got um three of these currently around the state. Um, they have one in Branch, Jackson, and up in Otsego County. And what these are, these are fully equipped aluminum trailers with probably thirty thousand dollars worth of equipment inside as far as gates, generators. Unfortunately, they they have captive bolt guns in there because if a if a a big cattle hauler or something like that turns over, sometimes you have to euthanize animals and that. So it's kind of dangerous to use a a uh firearm in such close proximity to everything, plus you're in tangled up carnage, you know, from aluminum trailer tipping over. So they were looking um to deploy three to four more of these trailers. This is all funded by the state of Michigan, put together by MSU. So these are twenty-four foot aluminum trailers. Um, you know, roughly twenty thousand dollars right there for the aluminum trailer, fully outfitted with what a person would need to be able, if they had to respond to a accident involving livestock. So if one of those big fifty-three foot bull haulers or pig trailers and that tips over, which we've had in Grasset County, we've had several of them. Um, not recently, but over the years, you know, we've, I could probably put five or six on my hand, you know? And then uh, what you have when they start cutting them open is then you got livestock running all over the place, cattle, hogs, sheep, whatever else. Um, state of Michigan had a big grant and uh, you know, like I said, MSU is facilitating that grant. They asked if any county would be willing to possibly sign up for uh for one of these trailers. These trailers are completely free along with all the equipment inside the trailer. They sign them over to Grasset County or to any county that they happen to select. Um, we were one of the chosen sites, you know, for this trailer. What they will do is um turn it over to Grasset County, take the title, sign it over. The only stipulations are for these trailers is half, county has to maintain them. These are all aluminum trailers. So the aluminum part on the trailer, it's not going to rot, rust, corrode, break. So you're gonna have some tighter maintenance, probably in another ten, fifteen years, maybe even twenty years. Um, maybe a few breaks here and there. They have electric brakes because they're heavy. Um, a little bit of equipment might get damaged on the inside, like some of the gates, if cattle get restless or whatever, they might start beating and banging and knocking them over. But uh, they also come with uh, not only that, but light systems, uh ropes, all the stakes, all the posts, the T-posts and that to put in the grounds as well. And uh tarps, they come with big uh livestock skitters to, you know, if there's down cattle, down hogs, load them up into that and uh um, you know, pull them out of sight, out of out of mind, wherever they might have to go. Um, but uh some of the, you know, like I said, the stipulations are sign them over to the county, county maintains responsibility on them, has insurance on the trailer and that. Um, one of the things that they require also from the county is that they sign a um a work agreement with surrounding counties. They don't want these trailers to travel more than a uh an hour away because um but i- if you're already going to have to respond, you know, pick up the trailer, then you're gonna have to get everything going that way. So they don't want anything to happen like more than an hour away. So it'd be the surrounding counties, Clinton, Saginaw, Isabella, Motcom. You know, is is who we'd have to have a a work relationship with, a mutual aid agreement is what they call them. So um and then uh, some of the other things that that MSU would do is also train our our fire and rescue personnel. Um, when they roll up on one of those scenes, what to expect, what to do, how to cut the animals out as safely as possible so that nobody gets hurt because unfortunately, you know, you got a twelve hundred pound steer or two thousand pound bull, you know, even six, seven, eight hundred pound um, you know, boar hogs or anything like that and three hundred pound gilts and stuff, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna be um irate, they're gonna be upset, nervous, uh frustrated. So they're gonna be kicking and that. So they uh will go through all the training with our local fire and rescue as well. MSU was supposed to be here, but they had a conference that they had to attend. So unfortunately, they couldn't make it tonight as well. They have a nice little slideshow presentation, but um, it's all right with you guys to accept um this generous gift. Um, we can get a contract going with uh MSU and the state and uh they can have it sent up and have the commissioner sign it, you know, for for this agreement. So it's, it really is a a very, very generous uh gift because being on the the end of having cattle out and hogs out and everything else and it's going to be right on the highway is mainly where they occur. It's going to be usually through the curves is what happens. Um, cattle or hogs or even sheep will shift weight when they're going around the curves and they get top heavy and that's what usually is where they're going to tip over at. So um, and we have several curves here on on twenty-seven and that's, everyone that I've been on has been on that. The only other ones I've had uh with accidents uh with livestock have been, somebody's left their trailer gates open and the cattle and hog have have dumped out the back and then we're chasing them down the road or or moving them off the road because they'll break a leg or whatever. So we've had a couple instances of that um, you know, happen. So and this trailer would also be good for anytime we have large lots of cattle or horses, you know, that get out. We can deploy this trailer as well, at least get them in a in a corral into a gate situation and then we can find out where their owners belong at, you know, but we can at least get them contained and corralled instead of you know, taking those resources and looking for where they gotta go or trying to find a nearby farm to where we have to put those animals in. So this will be a a great valuable resource tool for for animal control to use.
Where do you plan on keeping it at?
Out to Animal Control. Yeah, we have.
Any other commissioners have a question, sir?
Yeah, uh designated vehicle?
Yeah, we we use our our county trucks. Our county trucks are our, yeah, our animal control trucks are heavy enough to haul them.
Well, I didn't think that that trailer had something that was
Yeah, nope. They're all all aluminum trailers and and all the gates are aluminum in them as well. There's some shelving and bracketing inside the trailers, but uh they're just a nice lightweight aluminum trailer, double axle trailer that uh that we can haul with our pickup trucks.
What about, like, does all the firemen and all of the first responders, are they all going to be trained or is it just a few?
They will be. Nope, all of them will be trained. Uh, Mike and myself was, we were supposed to have a a fire chiefs meeting to to uh tell them the good news as well, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And it was canceled. So unfortunately, um, we couldn't share the good news with them. But they will, they'll be trained as well um on what to expect. That's all through MSU. MSU puts together a good training program and so I'm trained on on what to do.
In conjunction with emergency management? Is that how that's going to work or?
It would be.
What's the trailer assigned to? You or emergency management?
The trailer is assigned to the county. So it's it's the county, but it'll be stored out to Animal Control.
Okay.
Or actually
But I didn't know, you know, you had emergency management in that
Yeah.
Equation, so.
Yep. Yeah, Mike will definitely be called out, like if a if a cattle trailer or hog trailer gets turned over, that that's part of Mike's response. Mike will, Mike will also be there as well and uh kind of like the go-to person. While we're containing, trying to contain the animals and everything else, Mike's job will be there for all the environmental reasons.
Animal Control have ultimate responsibility over the trailer.
Correct. One other question too. You've mentioned, so what they're probably going to do, they have so many trailers and they're going to place them all around
They are.
The state of Michigan. So we will have, you'll have, I should say, you will have certain areas that you will go to. Like, say, you might have all of this about Tommy, but the staff of Motcom County, because somebody else would do the other
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. They don't want us traveling more than an hour away. So, you know, wherever that is, that's where that's where we'd be. And they, it's basically just the surrounding counties right here.
I think it's a great idea. That's my opinion. Okay, can we get in a, can we get a motion here?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allow Animal Control to take charge of an emergency trailer.
Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Bailey and seconded by Commissioner Gay. Um, roll this out, please. No, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion pass.
I'll bring, once they get that, uh, they just needed basic approval first. And then uh, they'll get a contract and I'll bring that to a commissioner's meeting and that way you guys can sign that and see exactly what it, what it all entails. So it's a great, it's a great program and a great thing. And and I was pretty excited when we signed up for it. Um, you know, I I've been fortunate enough to tour a couple of these E-Rail trailers. They're very, very nicely equipped and they have everything in there that we that we would need, you know, in order to um handle an emergency situation like that. So.
Well, thanks.
The board just approved it. I can just take it to the board chair and have them sign it.
We can do that. We can do that. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks both of you.
And then uh, also too today, we we just got awarded another six thousand dollar grant from the Grasset County Community Foundation. Um, this one's for a TNR project and this is for trap neuter returns. And so um, I had Blair uh put in for that. So Blair and myself worked on a little bit, but it was primarily Blair. You know, she put it, uh, she put it together and um, we were just awarded a a six thousand dollar grant to uh do some trap neuter returns out in focusing on trailer parks in Grasset County. So um, we're gonna work with in conjunction with Dallas to the Rescue. She has a vet that comes to her um rescue facility usually every couple of weeks. And so we can, we can set some live traps on. Primarily, we'll have probably residents set up the live traps and uh let them know how many we have. But at at fifty dollars apiece, you know, this will easily take care of over a hundred plus cats. So hopefully with with getting this first installment from the from the community foundation, maybe we'll uh be in line for some more in coming years. So that'll be, that'll be great news for for residents of Grasset County. So get some of those kittens.
I see that there's a billboard on one twenty-seven with a cat and a dog. Is that part of your, part of us, or?
Nope, it's not ours. I haven't, I haven't seen that yet. So um, but no, it's not, it's not ours, not our, not our bill.
Nice picture of a cat and dog.
Awesome. Yeah, no, it's not ours. And if if you guys don't mind, I'll uh, I'll talk some other good news. Um.
You're full of good news.
Pardon?
Just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, so you plan on trapping the cats?
Yep.
And then keeping them in Animal Control for a couple of weeks or?
Nope. Yeah, so so what happens is basically uh they're trapped the night before and then that morning, they're taken over to Dallas to the rescue. And then uh, they go through their procedure. Um, so they'll do females first and then they'll do males later because uh females are a little bit more invasive. So give them a chance to wake back up. Uh, in the evening hours, you take those cats and uh, release them back where you found them. So it keeps their 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 cat colonies together. So this is what it does. We receive a lot of calls about stray cats and kittens and that type of thing. So um, the problem is if you remove all those cats from the area, new ones just show back. If you put the uh cats that were still there that are established, then they kind of tend to fight off the other cats and get them out of the the territories and that. So um, but no, trap them the night before and then early in the morning, take them over to uh Dallas. And then usually about one, two o'clock in the afternoon, they're they're usually done with surgeries. Let the, let the cats recuperate, wake back up to where they can fend off and and they get their wits about them. Take them back out and release them back in the same general area that you that you trapped them at. They'll clip their ear and then this grant also uh covers rabies shots for the cats as well.
You mentioned that the vet worked with her every couple of weeks as well. We were going to be storing
Yep.
A hundred cats.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, sir. Especially ferals. Ferals are just uh
You don't want to have them any longer.
No, 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 no. Yeah, that's uh, that is a uh, that's a lot. That is a lot. And and just to have to handle them and deal with them, you know, takes takes quite a bit. So this is a great program that that uh that we recently received. Um, we were denied for a a Department of Ag grant. Um, apparently their their money um wasn't as as golden as what they thought it was. Um, and we were kind of wondering what was what was going on with that. They supposedly had a two million dollar grant that was awarded to Department of Ag for animal welfare. And the uh Polly, the, she's over shelters um for the state of Michigan. She was really having people put in and and uh, and go for this, but unfortunately, something happened to the grant. And uh, you know, so that, we just got news on that actually today as well. So so that was a little bit of bad news that we had. But um, we had roughly almost a fifty thousand dollar grant written for that. And so, you know, it uh unfortunately, we couldn't uh couldn't do that one. So, so that's, but that's all right. But um, I do have our numbers and stuff for the year for for the county and we did very, very, very well. We ended up having a ninety-eight and a half percent live release rate. So that that's phenomenal. We've hit that goal of ninety-eight and a half to ninety-nine for the last four years. The fifth, five years ago, we hit, I think it was eighty-seven percent. So anything over over ninety percent is considered a a no-kill shelter. So we kind of changed a few things out at the shelter um to make that possible, make that happen. We started some new programs out there. Uh, Facebook has really helped quite a bit, you know, on on moving animals as well. And uh, you know, so whether whether or not you you like social media, you know, it does, it does help. It does help. And there is, you 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 do have some people there on the couches, you know, that are firing back keyboard warriors and stuff. But for the most part, it's all positive. Um, but uh some of the numbers that uh, some of the numbers that we had, we took in two hundred and seventy-four dogs and one hundred and one cats. Um, we had a, we started a home-to-home program. Blair had been to a a conference or to a meeting. And uh, home-to-home is basically instead of that animal coming into the shelter, the person takes a picture of it, sends it to the the office with a good description and everything else of the animal. And instead of the animal coming into our facility costing taxpayer money and everything else, we're able to to kind of divert that animal away. And so we were able to divert eighty-one dogs and thirty-three cats with this program. So right there was another hundred and uh, ten, hundred and fifteen cats, uh cats and dogs. So that was fantastic right there, you know, that we didn't have to physically put our hand on. Uh, the owners then can vent, you know, who they want that animal to go to, see if it's a good fit for somebody. We were able to reclaim out of that two hundred and seventy-four dogs that we had in, we were able to reclaim a hundred and seventy-seven of them back to their owners. So most people are taking their animals back. Only six cats. Cats are a different story. Cats for, you know, owners when when they, uh, even though they might have a flea collar or something like that on them, owners usually don't look for their cats too much. We did adopt out ninety dogs and ninety-five cats. Um, shelter animals euthanized. We did euthanize five, five dogs. Three of those were uh walker hounds that we had for a couple of months in there, just couldn't find homes or rescues. And then two of them were pit bulls. One was aggressive and one was uh had a big tumor that broke open on its rear end. So um, and those were all basically in the November, December area, you know, is when we we had to euthanize those. Otherwise, we'd had zero. You know, but uh, we we picked up these three hounds like a- almost within a week of each other all right along the fifty-seven corridor and out in that state game area. Um, you know, so we felt in our hearts, somebody probably dumped a kennel, not one of our kennels in Grasset, but a kennel probably in the surrounding areas. So uh, they're all about the same age, all about the same style. So that's probably is what happened. We also do owner euthanases as well. Um, we did ninety-three dogs and seventy-nine cats for for people of Grasset County. So they couldn't get into their vets. The good thing about us uh doing this is we can, we can pretty much do it at a moment's notice for somebody. If a dog becomes sick, injured, ill, um, old age and and they can't prolong it, we can, we can usually set that up within a, you know, a day, if not that day, you know. So we we ended up euthanizing ninety-three dogs and seventy-nine cats for for the public. Complaints, uh, we handled almost twelve hundred complaints, eleven hundred and ninety-one. These range from dogs to cattle to hogs, you know, and that type of stuff, animal cruelty that run at large. We don't do any um dogs barking or anything like that, no noise ordinance type of complaints. Um, these are all state complaints that we go. We ended up selling three thousand six hundred and seventy licenses, eighty-nine kennel licenses. We held um two rabies We held, um, two rabies shot clinics with over 300 dogs and cats this last year. So that was, that was huge at $25 apiece. Doc Williamson comes in for those. And what's nice about that is no appointment necessary. They show up. We usually do one right in the middle of licensing season and then we'll do another one in the summertime as well. But we had 300 dogs and cats that ran through our shelter for, uh, for rabies shots, which is fantastic. We also, um, do a three-way split with feral cats as well with, uh, some spay neuter clinics. And so we add 12 of those spay neuter clinics. This is through, uh, gain, Grash animals in need is who we help with. So we do a three-way split with them on feral cats. So it roughly costs about $10 apiece. And we, we fund this with our, uh, some of our donation line item that we, that we get, donation line item money and also with our forfeiture line item money. Like say if a person adopts a dog and they don't fulfill that spay neuter contract, it gets turned back over to us and then the state says we can use that for spaying and neutering of animals or like educational programs. So we've kind of chosen to use it as spay neuter programs and get the best bang for our buck. Blair participated in a bark at the park this year. We finished up remodeling all of our inside kennels. Um, so that's great. We have a fantastic volunteer program out the shelters as well. We had volunteers last year donate 468 hours to the shelter doing various tasks. So that was great. Walking dogs, maybe they're cleaning kennels, doing deep cleans and that type of stuff. Coming up this year, uh, and it was in the five-year plan. We're going to be, uh, taking bids to replace our, our 2014 Chevy pickup, um, Emily Drives. And so, uh, we'll probably be, I kind of wanted to go through winter with our old Chevy just to kind of, you know, let that thing take the abuse and assault and stuff. And so we're going to be looking at, uh, um, coming back to you with a, with a bid on replacing that truck. Yeah. So.
From the sheriff. Don't wait too long.
No, I know. That's what, uh, so that's what we're going to be doing, uh, as well. And, um, and then also, yeah, I, I hear you. And the price goes up too. Late license renewals will be probably mailed out last, uh, next week. And then we'll start kennel inspections in April. So. Does anyone have any questions for me?
How big?
I have three. Yep, three people. Myself, Emily O'Boyle is our, uh, another animal control officer. And then Blair does our office, office and kennels at, at work.
Cause it's, uh, you know, 24 seven you got.
We are. Yep, we are. We're, we're on, we're on call 24/7. We're in there seven days a week. So Emily and myself, um, take the on-call duties. Usually we rotate every week and then every other weekend we're on call as well. Blair has filled in for us a couple of times. Like if we can't for some reason make it to feed and water, she'll make it for us and, and do the feed and water and then that over the weekend. But we run a 24/7 animal control for emergency complaints.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
You too. Thanks. Okay, consideration to pass resolution to, um, participate in the addition opium litigation.
So move. Support.
A motion by Commissioner Owens, supported by Commissioner Gay. To pass the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call those to resolution. Roll call for the resolution.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent.
The motion passed. Administration Organization Plan. That's on page 22.
So. Those of you that were present at my interview are, are familiar with what this is requesting during the interview. It is the, the exact same plan that was proposed. Should I be appointed the administration role or administrator role? What we would like to do is build an administrative team that works around my strengths and weaknesses. And to do that, um, we need to change the structure of what it currently looks like, where we have an administrator, a finance director, H, HR payroll, senior accountant and, and a procurement officer, uh, of which two of those are currently vacant. And what I would like to propose and request approval for is to turn that model into an administrator, deputy administrator, senior accountant, and then a payroll procurement position. We would condense the office down from five positions to four. The overall savings and salary alone would be just under, uh, $40,000. So if you include benefits, uh, um, along with that, we would be looking at an annual savings of approximately $60,000. In doing so, uh, changing to a deputy administrator, um, model. We have included in this packet what the deputy administrator, uh, job description would be. On top of that, uh, we have also included, uh, comp wages. And what we did for the wages is, is we went around to other counties that had an administrator and a deputy administrator, found out what the salaries were for both of those positions and found out what the percentage difference is between the two positions. So for example, in the data set provided here, Kalamazoo County administrator there makes $234,000 and the deputy administrator makes 80 or $206,000, uh, which is 80%, 88% of what the administrator makes. We were able to find, uh, 16 different counties or we were able, we contacted 16 different counties. And of them, 10 of them had, uh, were able to provide us with, with their data. And on average, the deputy administrator made approximately 82% of what the administrator made. So that's how we came up with what we thought that this position should be, um, appensated. We then went to the department head wage scale and, and found the grade that closely represented what the, that average was. The average for the deputy administrator was about $71,000 to start, um, when compared to the Grasham County administrator. That, that lined up with grade five of the department head wage scale. So that's why we are suggesting for this particular, um, position, that it be a grade five on the department head wage scale. For the payroll procurement position, what we were looking at is we attached a job description. We would be pulling the payroll function from the current HR payroll and combining that with the, what is now the open procurement position. When we graded that out, that graded out be a, a grade nine, where the wage for that would be between 39,000 and 48,000. What I'm requesting from the board would be authorization for these two new positions. Uh, and in return, we would be, uh, we would not be filling the finance director position or the current procurement position.
Okay. What I would like to say is this, is that first of all, you are the first finance person that the county's ever had when you took the job. And there was four people, you're right. I was thinking there was three, but there was four people. But the county commissioners were more involved in doing the finance part of it. There, there's other issues too here is that you have four people in there counting you. And what you're saying, what you're saying is that they could take over some of your duties. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. Why haven't they been doing that to begin with? Why did we, why didn't, why did we have four people there if they can take over some of the duties? Do they have that much time to take those duties over? We really didn't need five people in there to begin with.
I'm, I'm more interested in focusing on moving forward with the current administration that we have.
But when you took the job, you, you've been here six days now. You said that you would take and finish doing, you would still be the finance director and we would save this money. Now you're saying, I need more help. I need to take my help and give them more money. And there are people in this courthouse right now, especially in the courts, that have been there 20 years that don't make this kind of money.
What I'm actually suggesting is, is decreasing the amount of employees in administration, not increasing, and decreasing the pay, not increasing.
You are increasing it though. You're giving people more money, making more money that's been here less time than people that's been here for 20 years, 20 plus years that work, have been working here for 20 plus years that are not making this kind of money.
But my, but also my discussion is positioned. I'm not, I'm not.
I don't think it's not, you know what? It's like if I go to work and they say to me, Jen, I want you to take work in the office today. I don't say, oh, you know what? Can I have more money? Cause working in the office more is a little bit more detailed than maybe watching a child. If you've got, if somebody's got that kind of time that they can take over some of these jobs, then they should be doing it. They're getting paid to begin with to work here. And what are they doing in that in between times that, that they, that they need more money if they're going to do more? Are they going to stay over longer hours? Are they going to come in sooner? Are they going to work a weekend or a night? Or are they going to just work the same hours?
Well, it would be expected to work 40 hours a week.
Yeah.
But what is happening is I am removing lower level activities from certain positions and adding higher level activities to that position.
But what I'm saying, those people that are lower activities, in other words, what were they doing that they're able to do more now? What were they doing before that they now are not going to be doing to be able to help you?
Well, we don't, we don't have those positions filled right now. So I don't, I, I'm unable to answer that question.
I'm wondering, the other thing I'm wondering is why don't you work a couple of months to see if you even need these people? Or maybe you'll find out that, you know what? This is not going to work. I'm going to have to hire that fifth person.
Well, I can tell you since the beginning of this calendar year, um, when Tracy went on vacation and when our procurement position was open, there are multiple nights during the week that I work until 8:30, 9:30 at night. This past weekend was actually the first weekend that I did not work both Saturday and Sunday. And there hasn't been a holiday that I haven't been in the office. So I guess my conclusion would be that yes, I, I do need to fill those positions.
I think you need to have a, of the fifth person. I think we need to hire someone. Because if you're working weekends and holidays in here, then you really need to fill your position. You need to have the fifth person filled. Because otherwise these guys are going to start working weekends, nights, holidays, and they're going to come back and say, I want more money.
Right now.
And I could tell you that the courts were on weekends, nights, a lot, and they've never asked for more money. I went and took a tour through the courts just recently. And that was one of the biggest things that they told me that, that they, that they have employees there that have been working till six, seven o'clock at night. Some come in on weekends because of certain trials that they have and they've never asked for extra money.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
This, this whole plan that Chris is putting for us today, he put that same plan before us, before he was hired. And this is what, what we took into consideration as part of his being hired.
You said that you were going.
Nothing has changed. In his plan, nothing has changed.
No, I don't remember saying that we were going to give somebody more money in the.
It was right funny. This, this has not changed.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's try it. Why don't we just try it first and see if it's going to work before we give this raise?
No, he says he has to try it. He says he's worked.
Well, I'm, okay, let me put it this way. Let's give everybody that's worked in this building over 10, 10 years, the same raise. Everybody, okay? That would make it fair for people that's been here 10 years working. Am I not right? I see you shaking your head. There's a lot of people in this courthouse that is tired of seeing us giving raises. And first of all, I thought we were going to wait and do the raises all at one time in June.
This is his, this is, he is reorganizing his administration fit and model that he presented to us when he interviewed. There's nothing has changed.
I don't remember this race.
Agreed.
I, I, I mean, I've read that.
We agreed with it. That was part of the whole, the, the whole concept. This is what we agreed to.
Well, I'm.
Sorry you believe that there's, everybody should be paid the same. But in this world, people are not paid the same.
Yeah.
And people have different responsibilities in, in every part of this courthouse. People are lower level clerks and higher.
Courts. The most important thing in this whole courthouse is the courts. That's why you have a courthouse for the courts. And yet they make less.
Arguing.
I'm saying we'll give everybody and the, everybody in the whole courthouse, the same raise.
So you're going to give a person that does entry level clerk work the same as the clerk that has.
They've got more than 10 years. Yep. If they have more than 10 years. How many years does Sheila have here?
This is a discussion about Sheila or Becky.
How many years do they have?
That is not something that I know off the top of my head.
I think Sheila has less than three and I think Becky has.
This is, this is not right what she's saying. I'm, I'm, I'm.
Right.
I disagree with you wholeheartedly.
Listen, I just took a tour through the courts. I was there for, I think it was almost three hours going through the, all of the court system. And that's what I, that's what I hear. The people have been here 20, 25 years. I mean, I see you shaking your head. Am I not right? And Tom, you've been here for a long time. Am I not right? A lot of people complain that people can walk in here, be two years and they're getting ungodly amount of money. I'm just, I'm telling you that I'm sticking up for those who have told me time and time again for the last 20 years, and I agree with them. And that should be a fair thing. If you've been here 10 years or longer, why are you still making $22 an hour or $17 an hour? When maybe they should be making the same amount of money.
Hamstring our, our new administrator. Well, that's my feeling that, uh, this here, it looks like a big jump from HR to the deputy administrator. But we hired Chris and let Chris run that.
He can run it, but he's asking for more money, just like in the courts. I'll go to the courts on.
He just gave you a $50,000 cut. He's going to touch your wages in administrative $50,000.
Now, I'll tell you what.
Hear that?
I'll, I'll be in the courts. If you guys pass this, I'm going to the courts and tell them that they need to come into every single meeting and start asking.
Well, you can ask all you want, Jen. That's fine. It's a, it's a public forum. You can ask what you want. But I, we took Chris at his word. We hired Chris to do a job. He's trying to reorganize his administration. He needs this. And there's no delaying because he's got to go out, like he just told you. He's been working weekends and everything else to keep the bookwork up. He can't keep it up.
That's why we need to hire. A fifth person should be hired then.
No.
You gotta hire a fourth person first. We only have three people now.
Who's your fourth person?
I don't have a fourth person right now.
As long as you said, you've got Becky and you've got, um, Sheila and you've got you. That's it. And so you're going to hire the fourth person. And that's where you're going to pay this money to.
No, the fourth position that will be posted will be the payroll and procurement position. One of the two positions that I am requesting authorization for.
I support Chris and I support your plan. I don't know if we need to take a vote.
Second.
Yeah, you have to.
You, you just put the motion on the table, Tim.
Okay.
Yep.
How much are you paying the deputies also, right? I thought you were paying.
And then to approve the.
I'm just asking for authorization for the position.
Yes.
So you're going to hire a fourth person. Put an add-on for grace. So.
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay. A motion was made by Commissioner Owens and second by Commissioner.
No, made by Gay.
Oh, I'm sorry. A motion was made by, uh, Commissioner Gay and second by Commissioner Owens. Would you please read this over again?
To approve the deputy administrator position at a department head grade five. Um, it's in the packet. We want that in the motion.
Yes. It was grade five. I thought that was.
On the next page.
Over here. There's nothing there.
70,325.
465. Four hundred and sixty-five.
And to approve the payroll procurement position at grade nine and effective.
So the nine would be the.
Well, it'd be effective right, right now or, yeah, maybe tomorrow.
Yes, I, I agree with that because he's got to be able to hire.
Yeah.
Here is grade nine. So that is. Okay.
Scoring of the position.
Yeah. Okay, so a deputy administrator will be, be paid seventy thousand or thirty, well, seventy thousand, um, three hundred and twenty-five?
That is the pay grade.
That is for the, that is for the deputy administrator.
Okay, and that you will put that out for everybody to apply for that job?
No.
You're not, that's part of it. If you're going to hire or put somebody as a deputy, you have to put that job out for everybody to apply.
Not within a reorganization.
Anybody in this building is what I'm saying.
No.
Didn't have to.
We've always done it before.
This is a reorganization. This is not a position that has, was there and you're rehiring a position. This is a reorganization.
No, it's in just your office is what you're saying, right? That's not how we've done it before. If you have a job opening in the courthouse, you open it up to anybody in the courthouse.
It, it doesn't sound right to me.
Well.
Chris should have, he's the administrator. He.
That doesn't matter. We're commissioners. We're high, we're, we're the top.
Well, I, 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 we hired him. I, I put my faith in him. We, we have. We have a, a degree of cross.
That's right.
I, I, I have the cross.
You said yourself in a car with, or, um, Dave, you and I was driving over to Frankamoot. That you wanted to see anybody that wanted a raise to wait three months if they lost somebody in their office.
Well, that.
So you've told your. Yeah.
That sounded pretty good at the time.
Yeah, so you changed.
Well, actually, yeah. Reality in the head.
Okay, well, that's okay. I just want to get this straight.
See, Dan, if we would have waited three months, then we would have had, uh, who, who, uh, welched.
Break and quality.
Yeah. You know, uh, we would have had to wait and we would probably had different people and.
You know what? I don't want to hear about it because of the fact that you don't have to answer to me. You're going to answer to the rest of this courthouse. Because they.
We answered the.
I'll tell you something. It's gotten to the point, you notice that every time, every election, the only, I'm always on here. I always get reelected. But you guys can, you can tell the people in the courts. Tell the people when you walk through the courthouse. Tell Tom over there.
Call the question.
In here, Tom.
Call the question. I call the question. That means vote.
A vote. A vote. Roll call vote.
You want to roll call vote?
Yeah, you have to, I guess.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
No.
Commissioner Smith is.
And I'm calling, I'm coming over tomorrow. Spend the day at the courthouse, you guys.
We're all the welcome, Matt. Okay. I think we're done.
Sorry, I'm sorry, sir. Okay, the next one is, um, consideration of unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Anyone? Okay, um, and now we go to, um, Commissioner Bailey. Um, you're in charge of finance meeting.
Yes, we have.
Go out of, um.
I would move that we close the regular meeting and go into the finance meeting.
Okay, um, was made by Commissioner Bailey. Close the meeting. Did you already support that? Okay, supported by, um, Commissioner Owens. Sorry, I already done it before you. Raise your favor.
I heard.
Those opposed? Motion pass. Okay. We need a motion to go into finance.
We already did. We're already in the meeting.
We had to go out of the, out of.
Fall to order. No, we're, we're, we are in the finance meeting.
Financial.
Okay.
And then first thing is, we have the, uh, financing report for March. Chris.
Okay, so the March finance report, um, our green prepayments have not increased from the last meeting. We are at a hundred and, just under a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Uh, just to remind you, we had budgeted two hundred thousand dollars this year for those prepayments. I expect that once, uh, the ground thaws, we're going to start seeing that activity start to pick up again. ARP funds and project lists been updated, um. In the last month, I have not received any additional requests for drawdowns or ARP projects. We have either spent or earmarked a total of seven point nine million dollars. Um, to date, the total amount that has gone out the door is three point two million dollars. Remaining unencumbered amount is zero dollars. Um, I do have an unfortunate update related to our audit. Our financial audit is being conducted by Yo and Yo, and it will not be completed and submitted on time. Our audit is due to the state on March thirty-first. Currently, we still have, um, requests that are open and have not been reviewed. Um, I have received a call from Woodhill Group, um, saying that they were intending to come back and work on some financial information to help clean up the audit, but they were on vacation and would not be available until March twenty-ninth. Um, I would expect that our audit will be two to three weeks late. Um, I did speak with Ally about what type of repercussions that she has seen other clients potentially that in, in the past, uh, that that has happened with. And she said, while she's not an expert on what exactly will happen, but typically, if our audit is late, the state will withhold revenue sharing payments to the county until it is submitted. Um, so we could expect, uh, a two to four week delay in, in our next revenue sharing payment. But we should still receive that. She has not seen any, um, any entity not get that, uh, once the audit was, was submitted. Um, I was just going to take a moment here to see if anybody had any questions related to that specifically.
Oh, we won't be in any, any financial difference just because we didn't get a revenue sharing, correct?
Correct. No, that will hinder, um, the, the financial, the, the cash balances or services or anything like that. We'll, you can still be able to.
Like, what is it exactly that we don't have done? What is the? You're saying that, uh, this company, Woodhill Group, is supposed to come back and is, what are they doing? What exactly?
They were coming back to balance some of the do-tos and do-froms and the fund balances and the delay in tax laws.
Okay, and that's, Yo and Yo doesn't do that or?
They don't do the balancing for us. They just make sure that the balancing has been done.
I see. Do they usually come every year, Terry?
I can confirm this.
Yes, please.
Woodhill Group is a group that, um, I'm working with, that Ally Barnes from Yo and Yo recommended for us to work with. Because their, um, their thought is that there is something in the program setup of BSNA that is causing posting issues. And they want to dig into it further. All, I have submitted everything that needs to be submitted to the portal, Shorelink, that we use, um, for our audit. But some journal entries need to be done, and they don't want those to be done until they find out exactly what's going on because there's a posting issue, is what they think. They will be back on three twenty-nine in my office, and they're going to start digging into that at that point in time. They think it's an accounting issue, um, not anything that finance is doing, just an accounting issue with BSNA. Something is causing the posting not to happen.
It's like in the computer.
Yep, in the system, in the BSNA software system is what they think, but they need to dig into that further. And yeah, they think it's an accounting issue. I am not an accountant, so I am very happy to be working with this group. They, um, the state does give a thirty-day extension, and they fully expect to be completed in April. So. Does that answer your question?
Yep, pretty much, yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and move on to the OPEB balance. Item number four, um. As, uh, our, our stock market, our investments are down a little bit from, from the previous month. Uh, the news is currently our OPEB is, is still up one point four percent on the calendar year as compared to the S and P up one point seven percent. Uh, that concludes, uh, the finance report for this particular meeting. Um, I can go ahead and focus your attention on the February cash balances. If you have any questions related to that, um, our general fund cash balance is down approximately five hundred thousand, seven point seven million to seven point two five. That is, uh, pretty much on par for what we usually see between January and February. COVID recovery fund is actually up, um, particularly, uh, related to interest. Um, that's been associated with the account. Uh, like I said, we do not have any disbursements. Other, other accounts are, are on balance. Does anybody have any questions relating to that?
I just have one question about the COVID recovery. I see that, um, that we use a little bit of money, but do we ever have to give that money back? Or is that ours to keep? Or how, what does it do and all of that?
We have until December of, of twenty twenty-four to spend that money. So we have encumbered all of that money. Um, the locals that we, we sign contracts with for the projects that you approved, um, they're aware of that. The deadline is in their contracts. Um, you know, Hamilton Township Director is, is sitting here with us. He has a couple of projects that he's just waiting for the right time to execute. And, uh, he knows that he has a, a, a good year and a half to, to do that, so.
Another question I have for, um, Terry. Is there a lot of people that have not paid their taxes?
Yeah, they're all, this is a good month for us. They have until the end of March, March thirty-first to, to pay the taxes that are, on the properties that are going into foreclosure. So between now and next Friday, it's crazy busy and that number is going to change a lot.
What happens? I see that a lot of businesses are folded. And what happens if they owe taxes? They just don't pay them and they just?
Yeah. Yeah, if that's their choice or if that's a situation that they unfortunately have, yeah.
Yeah, I just wonder if I see a lot of them, especially on Mount Pleasant, but there's a lot and brush it through. Sorry to hear that.
It's rough.
Yeah.
We do everything in our way.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, if there's no more, uh, questions, I'll go ahead and have you focus on February check register. If you have any questions from your previous review.
How come Greater Greshad got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
We collect the millage that funds Greater Greshad.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's just a disbursement to them from the millage that's collected.
When you see large numbers like that going to different groups, it's probably to fund out of the, you know, the treasurer will pay a, a millage payment. Okay. They've paid one to them and they paid one to, um, uh, shoot, state.
MSU extension.
MSU, thank you. MSU extension. They're on the same millage. They split it.
You'll see similar things with the libraries.
Library, you'll see money go to them. Uh, there's different millages that, that she, that the treasurer pays out. So when you see those large numbers like that, going to one of those entities, that's what it's usually is, is the millage.
Okay.
What is EPS?
EPS is, uh, they provide various security services for us. For example, they do the panic buttons. Um, I believe they come in also and work with our alarm systems. So every one of our outbuildings also, uh, usually contracts with EPS.
What is MGT of America consultant?
MGT provides, uh, multiple services to the county. One of them is reporting to the state, um, prosecuting attorney, uh, and front of the board, uh, grant requirements. So expenditures related to the grant, they, they do our monthly reports for that.
There's a lot of, uh, First National Bank, Omaha.
Those are credit card payments. Each individual credit card within the county has to be paid separately. So you'll see a run of those every month paying off the credit card balances.
How many credit cards do we have out now, Chris?
I believe we have approximately fourteen. Now, for example, emergency manager, um, has one. Like that was given to him during the COVID. Uh, he used it significantly through the COVID, um. Animal Control has one. We keep one in administration or the departments that are big enough to have one for themselves. So they'll come down and use that one.
So each of these is a, uh, credit card?
That is correct. So each of those credit cards will be assigned to a specific.
And they're paid off and all.
Every month. Yeah.
And those are reviewed by finance.
Yeah.
Use those to make sure that it's all done properly.
Yep, for every charge on there, the department will forward to us the backup support for it.
Here's another one. Greshad Emergency Service, AUTH. What's AUTH?
Greshad Emergency Service Authority, yeah.
Authority. Okay, you've got them on here twice. One for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four, and a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and thirty. See, Greshad Emergency Service, Greshad Emergency Service. There's one here and there's one. It comes to two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fourteen.
Oh, okay, yeah. So it's the tax disbursement from the treasurer's office. They collect the.
Tax.
Tax charges on the phones and distribute it to dispatch.
That's right. I remember that now. Okay. And then one more, and then I'm done. That was just a minute here. I lost it. If it's on the side. Oh, I have lost it. Or mine.
All right. Well, if there's no more questions on the check, we could move on to the.
This Pennington Farm Greenage, is that? Like controlling the water?
That would be. A company that assists the drain commissioner and.
Controlling the waters.
In piling.
Piling.
You know.
Going to drain, it's it's deal with the drains. And that's a payment to one of the contractors for the drainage commission. More morning sun. It's the newspaper, daily newspaper. Yeah, I put ads in it. Oh, you put ads?
We have subscriptions and we put ads in it.
Yep.
Here, just right here. It's D E E R E and company for thirty eight thousand.
Deer and company? That would be the the tractor that was purchased.
Okay.
John Deer.
Okay, I'm well done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Back to the revenue expenditure. I will say one thing related to Fund Two Three One, the opioid fund. And at the end of February, we showed a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars in that fund, but during the month of March. We did receive a second settlement check for approximately fifty four thousand dollars, so. That will be a project going forward for the board.
Chris, I have a question. The GIS fund, how much is this? I know that all the townships put in for that. How much is it altogether?
How much is what altogether?
The GIS, then when they fly over to the GIS.
How much does that cost? How much money do we have in it or?
No, how much does it cost?
It costs in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I think we do that every five years. Update the GIS system with with new. Real photography. If there are no more questions, I guess that that includes my. Fortune of the finance presentation.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Gary?
Best ones.
Well, first of all, I would like to echo the sentiments of Judge McDonald and Tom Clark in the hiring of Chris. Think he's going to do an amazing job. So. Investments, they are moving along nicely. Everything is being processed and and going as as scheduled. There isn't really, I I've been negotiating a little bit with Commercial Bank and they're doing great, so everything's everything's moving along fine. And I don't have anything more to report right now on investments. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I just have one question. Do we have any money invested in any small banks that are connected to the Silicon Bank that just crashed?
Not that I'm aware of. We do have investments with like M class and. We have a fund through a local bank that disperses money out to protect our money because the FDIC is two hundred and fifty thousand. That's what's insured. There are banks that that goes out to, but that I'm aware of, there are none connected with it.
I know there's three major banks that have crashed, but I just heard the news that there's a lot of small banks that just closed. And that they're not going to secure that two hundred and fifty thousand.
I have not heard that. That's that's not.
I watched the.
Mm-hmm.
News.
Yep, I.
But I just wondered, I just wondered.
Okay, thank you. No, not that I'm aware of. Yeah, I know, good. And they they keep a pretty tight eye on that stuff, so. Okay, so the other two reports, the transfers at the bank. Does anybody have any questions on that? Reports that I've submitted for that, the transfers for February?
You're doing a good job.
Oh, well, thank you. I do have one more. I did get one more payment on the DTE wind turbine settlement payments from Pine River, so now we are down to just three that are owing for that, so.
So all the taxes have to be in by March thirty first?
Property taxes, yes.
Property taxes.
Mm-hmm, for the for those that are on year three.
Oh, okay.
There's the first year, second year, and then the third year is when they.
So what do they do? What is the, the winter taxes are due in February?
Yes.
I have to pay taxes, so I didn't keep up with it.
Oh, yeah, yep, they have to be.
Thirty first.
March thirty first.
Every year.
That's every year unless it falls on a Sunday and then it's the next day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, well, you got something to tell me. No, no, you're all done. Usually you say something at the end, but.
Okay, concluding our finance section, I will now make a motion that we return to regular session. Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Bailey and supported by Commissioner Gay that we go back into regular session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those, anyone opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the expenditures. Support.
Motion by Commissioner Bailey to approve the.
Expenditures.
Expenditures, sorry.
Pay the bill.
And second by Commissioner Owens. All those in favor, say, do we need a vote on that? No, no. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion has passed. Okay, consideration of unfinished business. I think you're an additional. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, I don't even have that on here. New business?
One more public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, down here, yeah, that's why I was up here though, considering unfinished business. Okay, I see. Addition, public comments and board comments. Is there any? Okay, yes. Almost be.
Good evening, everyone. Under Sheriff Topsy with the Sheriff's Office. Those who don't know me, Chris, congratulations. I'm I'm excited to have someone who. Has lived here for a while. You've worked here for a while. You've got kids here. I think you're going to have the best interest of Gresham County as we move forward. There's many things, you know, I've talked about a few of them over the years that I think. We both agree there are some things that can really help this county as we move forward, but I'm not up here to talk about that. From the Sheriff's Department. If you are around Ithaca this coming Saturday, we're going to have a fairly large. Search operation going on. It's going to be kind of headquartered down at the Gresham County Road Commission Office Complex. They picked that because it's off the beaten path. It's not on, right? It's not on Center Street. It's down on Commerce Drive. The businesses that are down there are all state and federal buildings. No one should be down there. Provides plenty of parking. But as everyone probably knows, there's a gentleman that's been missing that that resided in Ithaca for quite some time now. He. Last known was on February eleventh that someone seen him, was reported missing on February fourteenth. The Sheriff's Office has done numerous follow-ups on tips we've received. We've walked wooded areas, we've flown drones, we've had. Clinton County brought drones, Alma Police Department brought drones in here to fly. The Michigan State Police flew a grid search yesterday. If you wondered why Trooper Three was flying over Ithaca, we got lots of questions about that. That was why they were here. They were flying a grid pattern. We've had to wait till the snow melts. Just in case, you know, we have no idea what happened to this gentleman. Most likely, when you have someone who's gone missing, that's of the age this person is and some of the health. Issues you surmise, they may have succumbed to something out in the wilderness or outside, so we were. Even though we had went on many walks, I personally have walked all over Ithaca in places I've never walked before. Now that the snow is finally melting, we're going to do this large scale. We should be able to say after Saturday. That if he's here, we're going to find him as far as if he is seized somewhere and laying somewhere, we should be able to find him. We've got a group.
I got contacted or was contacted by the individual who had connections with a gentleman who uses a scientific.
A mathematically equation, actually, of where the most likely this person is. The gentleman that does this teaches it all over the world. He was a former Alaska State Trooper. I felt pretty lucky that somebody contacted me to want to use this system, so we've fed them an extensive amount of information. They have came up with a map. They're the ones that really encouraged us to have this flown by air. So that's been done already. This weekend, we're hoping to get several forty to fifty volunteers out there. I've got. Local farms lined up that are going to bring in people movers and Subway here in Ithaca has graciously donated all the subs and cookies to feed everybody. Tomorrow I'll be soliciting to see if I can get some more donations for food, water, that sort of things. So it's going to be a large scale operation that's going on here, and I wanted you guys all to be aware because somebody's going to ask one of you commissioners what's going on, and that is what's going on. We're looking for Jen or John Danemark.
Oh, I see.
He's in his mid sixties.
Oh, that's not for him.
No, it's not, but he had some. Some he has some health issues and and things. He just moved to the location where he's missing from. Literally like the day that someone seen him last there. So. It's one of those true, where is he? You know, what happened to this gentleman? So there'll be a lot of people around walking different areas. There'll be drones that will be flying around again to, you know, search other areas. They were able to use some high powered cameras where they felt they could actually see the bottoms of like the sewer lagoons and stuff. The the weather was calm enough yesterday that they could see through the water pretty well. To make sure that that's not an option, but we will still, we have cadaver dogs coming in from all over the state of Michigan. There's going to be three of them here. So we're we're doing everything that I've. Everything that I know that we can do to try and locate this individual and and, you know, bring some closure to this. If we don't locate him, then obviously he's somewhere else and that will be another page and another chapter that we have to deal with, but. Right now, we're doing everything we can to try and make sure that we locate this gentleman, so. Speaking to George, you mentioned something about us in the car problem. We weren't able to, the sheriff. Worked with Chris, actually, and we were able to get, we found out we were not going to be able to continue to get Ford Explorer patrol cars, so the sheriff. Two weeks ago, we went and picked up two new Chevy Tahos. Which we were very surprised to find out they were actually cheaper this year than what the other patrol vehicles that we could have purchased were, so that was a good thing. We were able to. Save, you know, a considerable amount over vehicles that we weren't even going to be able to get.
We have to refurnish the inside.
Yep, some of the equipment we can use, some of it we have to buy.
Yeah.
But a lot of that stuff has been.
Cages and things like.
Cages and things, but we've had them for so many years throughout the explorers. They just kept it retrofitting. Get anyhow, a lot of them, you're starting to get scratched up, wax and glass or yellow plex gas. It's really not going to be the end of the world, so. So, yep, so we've got a couple of new vehicles. If you see them sitting out here, they look. Much different than what the ones we are used to seeing. Pretty excited about getting them. The officers are excited about them because they have tremendously more room in them. So that it'll be, we're going to start out with these two being our command vehicles because they have so much extra stuff they have to carry with them. Which will be really nice to have that in that that extra back area where they can carry all the equipment and things like that, so it's going to be really nice to have them, so. Mike apologizes he can't be here tonight, but he has a medical procedure tomorrow, so we're, I came to. Wish he would represent the Sheriff's Office, yeah, so he's doing good. I just actually had to step out to make a phone call. We had one of our sergeants was injured today in a. In our defensive tactics training, you'd think that it would be like when he, it was actually doing a maneuver thing, so he was nobody involved but himself and. He ended up doing something, dislocating a rib or something, and I'm like, you know, you expect it when they're hands to hand, but you don't expect it when they're doing. So anyhow, he'll be on light duty for probably a week or so while we, but it kind of timed out perfectly for us because we had some detectives that are going on. Occasions, so he can fill in and do some of that type of work. So it'll be, it'll be a good thing. Sergeant filling in in the sergeant spot is kind of a good thing.
So you're going to just do Ithaca or have you been Gresham County?
Well, we. Well, a little bit of both. Wherever we've gotten a tip, we went out and and investigated that. Some of it's been in the city, some of it's been out in the rural areas. The farthest tip I believe we got was from Lelandaw County. I happened to, one of the detective sergeants up there used to work with me at Am County, so I contacted him and I was able to get all the information up there. Pictures and what have you, so they knew who they were looking for. It came from an area in their county that they were. Pretty. Much assured because of who lives in that area that this guy wasn't there, but they did go and look and they have all that information. We will, we're primarily focusing on because of his age, health issues, the area that he could. Physically travel on foot because he's, he only, he doesn't have a car. It's within approximately a two mile area, and that's all figured out by these experts in this. And then they read out most likely places he could be from his residence to the places we knew he went, and you could track that from like past spending history and that sort of thing, so we know these are where he went. All his friends say this is where he went. So you know where those areas are. Then you take where he used to live. He used to live outside of town, both to the south and to the north. And so you use those locations. To create this grid of where you're going, where where is the most likely spots are one color and you're going to focus on those. And they'll have the cadaver dogs and that sort of thing, and then there's larger areas. There were some just vacant fields, farm fields that were in this arc of area. Well, that's where you use a helicopter and drones. Because they can cover, you know, hundreds of acres with a camera really quickly compared to us having to have boots on the ground, so. We're going to be finding, really focusing on drainage ditches, heavily wooded areas you can't penetrate through. And see into deer lines, that sort of thing that pretty much nobody wants a dead person sitting anywhere, so.
Snow and stuff.
Yeah, it's been extremely cold. I mean, the day, like the weather when first went missing, very likely was outside, maybe not dressed super warm or super.
For the weather.
For for the weather, you wouldn't have had like super heavy clothes on, but it got really cold after that, and then we've had almost like constant snow cover to some degree or another, so it's been. Of all the previous winter, we didn't hardly have any snow, then when this guy went missing, it's like we've had snow almost. The whole time. We tried to plan something for this past Saturday or Sunday. Of course, we got three inches of snow on Saturday, so everything kind of has been pushed back, but. We got a little chance of rain, but I'm I'm saying it's going to be sunny at forty by noon on Saturday, so.
Ponds are still thinking.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a good crew of people coming to help, so I think it's going to be a good, it'll be a good thing for the Sheriff's Office as well, and we're having, like I said, not only from our local businesses, but from. You know, Ashley Fire, Ithaca Fire, still waiting here from some of the others, you know, I I think we're going to have plenty of plenty of people here. The Michigan DNR is coming in. You know, State Police is assisted on this, and we've had lots of resources that it's not a great thing for us. Hopefully we can find it.
All right. Would you say what time they're gathering?
At ten o'clock is the briefing, so they'd like everybody there before ten. So at ten o'clock is when they're going to actually do the official briefing. You'll start seeing apparatus and stuff start showing up at about eight because they got to set up a warming tent. A food serving tent. They're going to bring up Clinton County is bringing up their emergency services trailer, so we'll have internet access and. Televisions that we can see what's going on with surveillance drones and stuff. It'll be, it'll be a nice thing, and then they can put up all these. televisions that we can see what's going on with surveillance drones and stuff. It'll be, it'll be a nice thing, and then they can put up all these charts that we actually had a meeting last Sunday to come up with all the different areas to be searched and what have you.
Are you looking, are you looking for any volunteers other than searchers?
We're not gonna turn anybody away. If, you know, if people wanna come down there, we just ask that you dress for the elements. Um, like our firemen, we're asking them, don't wear your turnout gear, because it's gonna get really hot if you gotta walk very far. Um, but I, I, I think we'll have a really good turnout of people and, and, and people who wanna come and help, that's great, you know what I mean? Because that, when they brief them, um, they'll let everybody know what they're looking for. I've got all the extra like bright yellow vests that the Sheriff's Office has, and we don't have a ton of extra ones, but all of those, we'll have them down there. Um, the gentleman that we're working with that was retired from D N R, works for Board of Water and Light, who's helping us on this, Lansing Board of Water and Light, he um, we're gonna try and put every team out with a garment like E-tracks, so that we can well, we can know where they're at, but when we're done, we can download all that data. We will know for sure everything was, was covered, cell phones, a lot of people have you know, some of the new smartphones you can download, Anox or whatever, and it'll give you details of exactly where we've been. Yeah, so we can have uh detailed maps of where we've covered extensively, so we don't
I assume that he has relatives. Relatives are the ones that call?
No, actually, it was uh his caretaker that is the one who actually called. Um, and there's some some distant relatives, but his wife passed away a few years ago. That was another issue this year from it and it was things, but um yeah, so anyhow.
I'm sorry to hear about it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a
I've heard about it.
Yep. Our canine, uh, I don't know whether, because of his work schedule.
Just curious.
Yeah, and he's not trained in cadaver anyhow, so he's a tracking dog, so we'd be looking for it alive first and not a, not a but they had a ins- um incident uh last week. We had a helper business that got broke into. Um, one of our brand-new recruits, I don't know, have you guys been introduced to the new female deputy Loomis?
Uh, a few weeks ago, the sheriff brought both of them.
Both of them in, okay. Well, Loomis was working with Sergeant Willingham. They actually set up to run stationary radar on M fifty-seven, bucks a clock, hour, if I believe it, seventy-seven miles an hour, which obviously is a good stop. They spun around on the car, um, got the car to stop, passenger flees.
Oh, no.
Um
Wants an warrant.
You know, yeah, anyhow, it all turned out where they threw extensive search, canine was deployed, they searched, they found the individual uh and was hiding in a boat in a pole barn, had almost three thousand dollars cash on them.
A good bust.
Drugs were located on the backseat passenger, methamphetamine, driver had more multiple warrants out of multiple agencies, so all three ended up going to jail. While they were working on that, they find out that the um car wash on uh M fifty-seven at Middleton, next to the SnoCo, was broken into. That's why these guys were bleeding, because they cut their hands there. And then after determining, they were able to find out, and so it was a it was a really good stop and a great one for training, um, not only for our new
They were so stupid.
Yeah, so it was a, that was a really good, uh, really good start. We had a busy weekend with St. Patrick's Day this past weekend. There was a lot of drunk drivers and Sam can tell you, we had a really interesting one coming to jail just this morning. Uh, it was down way down the south end of the county, southwest part of the county, um, but that person was extremely high on uh, we believe methamphetamine. They were, uh, they were looking for somebody named Steve, then they were gonna, um, they were gonna use drugs from outer space with Steve, so. Anyhow, um, they were very interesting when they came into our
It was good.
This morning, so anyhow, their sense convoy, it was, it was an interesting, an interesting uh morning, to say the least.
You don't have a psychic to help you of on the missing person?
What's that?
Psychic, like they have on TV to find
No. No. No, I'll tell you a story some other time. Anyhow, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yep, and congratulations again.
Um, any other um comments from the audience?
Yes, this is Sam.
Oh, okay, hi, Sam.
How you doing? A couple of things. I just wanted to, um, I know Keith is gone, but I want to thank him on behalf of the county and the, and the board, uh, for his thirty-eight years of service of, uh uh, running the prosecutor's office. Uh, I, I think he's done a great job over the years, and I think we all wish him well, whatever he decides to do. And um, you know, we made this decision about Chris about a week and a half ago, and me back and forth with him every day on just a number of things and looking at things, I, I, I'm really confident we, we all made the right decision. And so I just wanted to tell you that.
Did you have anything else?
No, I believe that's it.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Bailey, do you have anything you would like to add?
Oh, hold on.
Thank you, Commissioner Gaye. Would you like to add anything? Our clerk, would you like to add anything?
I'll just give you a quick update on Proposal Twenty-two Two, because there actually isn't an update yet. Um, the legislation is trying to make the decisions on how we are going to run the nine-day in-person voting that will be mandatory um for state and federal elections coming up in the future. And so as soon as we get some guidelines, I'll be meeting with the local clerks. Um, because I'm not gonna let them just have to deal with this on their own. I think we need to deal with this on a county level. Um, or else we're gonna be having our local clerks not wanting to do the job if they have to burn up their whole P T O in order to run the election, so I'll probably be coming to you guys with a plan, because I think it's something that we're gonna have to do as far as to have voting centers. Um, I don't know if we can get away with one, or if we'll have to do four, just trying to keep that in mind of
The state legislature, you know, you want to put a lot of things, plans in your mind, but until they say
Plan that we come up, you know, we might run it for one election and then we may have
Yeah, it's gonna be flowing. It's gonna be, that was the dumbest thing the state could ever done.
We're not pushing, I'm, I'm not pushing the clerks into signing agreements, you know, that they'll pay for it.
Oh, my goodness, no.
They're, they're going, they're gonna have to pay for it because it is their responsibility, but we don't even know what it's gonna look like yet, so. Just wanted to throw that out there so that you guys know that it will be coming down the lines, a lot of work to put it together.
Commissioner Owens, would you like to say anything?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, well, this one, I need to ask our minister, if you'd like to say.
Yeah.
But thank you. Okay, and I'd like to say that I still voted for you to be administrator. I don't, it's business as usual. I need to voice what I have to say. Don't take it personal. Okay, and now you can make a motion to um, Commissioner Owens made a motion to
Commissioner Gaye second.
Okay, and Commissioner Gaye second, that didn't, okay, that's it.